Oh, it's probably, it depends if these officers don't write along. Right, I'd say probably ten percent ever.
I know where I was at.
I didn't know that on the picture.
Six o'clock, call the August twelfth meeting to order, ask clerk to take roles.
Devorak?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
First item of the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take a motion. Second, roll call.
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item into some public hearings. Time and place to close regular meeting and open public hearing petition resoning on five oh six East Broadway. Ask clerk when the notice is published.
August second.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
At this time, I'd like staff to provide a report.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, this particular item is a small rezoning request on East Broadway. It's a point two-two acres. It's a little portion of a piece of property that's going to be divided in half for a second home. A portion of that property is zone U one and the request is to zone it R two, so it'd be consistent with the rest of the property before they divide it and sell it off or not a second. There have been no comments.
Anyone present here who wishes to be heard for or against this proposed rezoning? Hearing none or seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is first reading on ordinance two thousand nineteen eleven hundred approving rezoning from U one to R one.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet? Devorak?
Motion carries. Next item is two thousand nineteen Street Repair Project. It's time again to close the regular meeting and open another public hearing on two thousand nineteen Street Repairs Project. Ask clerk when the notice is published.
August second.
Again, any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Like staff to provide a report? John?
Thank you. Um, we received five bids on this project. The low bid was the TK Congratulate hundred fifty thousand five hundred fifty dollars, which was underneath the engineer's estimate of a hundred sixty thousand five hundred. In the letter in your packets, they had a hundred seventy thousand seven hundred out of your project cost, actual construction, six hundred, uh, workmen acceptance of. Maybe have any questions?
Mike, you have anything to add?
Just needed project.
Questions, comments, council? Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against? Hearing none, seeing none, need a motion to close public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So.
Second, roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet? Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item is resolution two thousand nineteen seventy-eight approving plan specifications in form of contract. Need a motion?
So.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is resolution two thousand nineteen seventy-nine awarding contract. Need a motion?
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Motion carries. Lastly, resolution two thousand nineteen eighty approving contract and bond.
So I'll make a motion in a second and then roll. And I just want to emphasize, because we do get questions on certain roads, but this is according to Mike's well-established plan based on needs and budget and a number of things, so. Multi-year approach to take to this.
Second, roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item, public comments. It's time and place for comments for any item other than those that are in a public hearing. Wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'll ask to keep your comments to five minutes. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, seeing none, moving on to item six, consent agenda. Need a motion?
So.
Second, roll call.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Going to call attention to a couple items on the consent agenda now that it's passed through. Um, John, you want to introduce our new assignment?
Um, yes, I'd like to introduce Carol Thornburg. She's sitting in the audience here next to Cliff. Um, Carol will be our deputy city clerk as of tomorrow. And she currently lives in Red and spent many years, um, in the trucking business and has a degree, a bachelor's degree, University of Northern Iowa. And I think she'll fit in fine and we look forward to having John on our staff.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
All kinds.
Next, I want to call attention to retirement from the fire department. Chief, do you have anything you want to say to that, or would you rather say that under your comments?
I'd save it or now's an opportunity to.
Sure, go for it. I'm calling on you.
Just thanks to Adam and Lee's, he held several positions. Honor of Fire Department from lieutenant on up through assistant chief. He's a valued member, been an asset for many, many years. I think he has fifteen years total, so he'll be missed. He has young kids that he's involved with ball practice and coaching and things like that. And he's moved up the ranks in his full-time job with Ankeny Fire. He's a captain now, which is, uh, for them, that's a shift commander position. He works not only every third day for twenty-four hours, but he does a lot on his days off, too. Uh, so he just doesn't have the time and I appreciate that. It's, uh, good for him and really bad for us, really sad for us. We'll miss Adam, so. Thanks for all his years of service.
Well, I, uh, I'll say that I'll, I'll miss him as well. I was lucky enough that I actually hired him back in the day and so, um, and now you're, no longer have a member there that I can say that I just babysat, changed his diapers. So I, I, I'd like to be able to embarrass him with that comment.
Right.
But no, in all seriousness, Adam will be missed. Um, he's a, he's a great hire, uh, was a, you know, great for the city, uh, came to us, still wanting to be a police officer, kind of saw the light, um, decided to become a firefighter and, uh, went on and joined Ankeny and, uh, he's done very well, too, so.
He has asked to retire instead of resign so that he can still be involved with the fire department and he's definitely, uh, offered his consultation and all utilize that for sure, so I appreciate that.
Great guy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would echo the, uh, all of those sentiments in order with Adam and personally, he's not here, otherwise I'd be a little bit more snarky just because it's. Police jokes aside, it is really, really neat, uh, to see someone like him that, that, uh, I think it speaks to Jim and Dan, previous chiefs that, uh, develop, uh, young people and their careers are a direct result of time spent learning here. I don't know what the percentages are for CPR saves, but Adam's got to be, as I know, uh, in terms of number around, so I think he's quality, uh, a lot of leadership.
Next item is business items under item A, resolution two thousand nineteen seventy-three, improving ambulance billing service contract position, physicians' claims company incorporated at a rate of seven point seven five percent, claims collected, chief, I'll pitch to you again.
Yeah, this is an opportunity that we had to reach out and, uh, we could've went one of two routes, either find a third party to conduct our billing or with the departure of Becky, uh, her, between her and Deb, they, they did our billing. And, uh, pretty difficult to find a person to fill dual roles. Uh, so this is our opportunity to, to reach out. I think it relieves the city of a lot of liability. And, uh, if, if we was to fill that position with a full-time person, uh, it would cost way more money than, than hiring a contract from the service force, so. Uh, worked with Don a lot on this. Uh, we felt, I don't want to speak for Don, but, uh, this was definitely a better option for the city of Oak City.
And having been involved in that at one point in my life as well, I appreciate you guys working to find the right solution because I know how challenging this one particularly can be and, um, I think this is a good option by everything that I understand, so good job on this.
And to further explain this company in particular, one, is they had the lowest percentage collected on, on claims collected, uh, and, and we were looking for more than that. They're also an Iowa-based company, uh, they're in West Bend. They offer training for our members that, that a couple of the other services didn't offer, uh, didn't expound any way on, on that ability, so we felt this was not just the least expensive, but the best group to build. Worked.
Need a motion, please? Second. Roll call, please.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel? Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Third and Bridge Signalization Project. Uh, first item, resolution two thousand nineteen seventy-six approving change order number two in the amount of nine thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents. John?
So this change order includes, well, construction on the projects completed. Uh, we still need to hold a walk-through, adjusting, I'm just listing items. The change order closes off project quantities, then it also includes underneath the right turn, we found an empty trench. It was soft material and it wouldn't pass the subgrade prep, so we poured that out and added to the trench. Uh, that was a large component of the change order. Then northwest corner, we had to move the traffic signal pole because there was a distant utility, so it wasn't a good spot to build utilities, too. We shifted the traffic pullback, doing so, we added push, roll section to distance. To add an item to the change.
And that accounts for the overage from the original bid?
The.
Or was there something else prior to that?
The nine thousand six seventy-nine.
I'm talking about the total, uh, the original estimate, uh, or the original contract was two eighty-three and the final total was three oh three. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, yeah, and change order one was about ten thousand change that. Well, we added the vehicle protection and change, that was six thousand.
Okay.
And then we had, um, some million bill, three, we had, and then we had a sanitary sewer.
Questions, motion?
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Motion carries. Next item, resolution two thousand nineteen seventy-seven approving payout number four in the amount of one ninety-two four sixteen fifty-one.
So.
Second, roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Motion carries. Next item, first reading ordinance two thousand nineteen one thousand, uh, repealing chapter nine urban revitalization plan. Don?
Uh, yes, uh, a while back at one of the economic development meetings, the question came up about tax abatement, availability for development in Oak City. And chapter nine of the current city code provides an urban revitalization program, which is authorized under chapter four, state code. As we looked further to find a copy of the plan, because all the chapter does is adopt the plan, plan, accept document, we were unable to locate the plan itself, which was adopted back in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, but within minutes from nineteen eighty-nine indicated that the plan would be good for three years. Uh, Jenny checked with everybody we could think of, the state, county, anybody who might have a filing of it. And so in speaking with the city attorney and the bond counsel, they both felt that we had to make assumption that that plan did expire in nineteen ninety-two, three years after adoption. So the current chapter is really a known void, doesn't have any meaning, uh, even though there have been a few tax abatement approved over the years since nineteen ninety-two. Not that many last two thousand eleven. So for sake of clarity, we felt it'd be better to remove that from the city code, um, so there's no confusion in the future. And then if the city council chooses to, it can always re-implement a new urban revitalization area, um, and implement tax abatement tabling. The old tax abatement plan was only available for commercial or industrial, not labor mention tax abatement. So in a, in a sense, this is a housekeeping measure, just to, uh, clarify that that section is.
Questions? Motion, please?
So.
Second. Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Uh, next item, first reading ordinance two thousand nineteen twelve hundred, amending chapter forty-one point zero eight bows and arrows. Uh, I guess Don, start. You'll trace tag team on this.
Yeah, um, I'm actually covering both items seven D and seven E because they're related. Um, they both deal with urban deer hunting. Seven, uh, D, chapter forty-one oh eight is a code section that changes the rules and regulations from, uh, Oak County, uh, Conservation Commission to the city regulations. And then chapter forty-one A, which is the new chapter, that next section, uh, is the regulations under the city and it will be administered to the police department. Very good.
So we talked about this a few months back and since then I've been going to the task force meetings that Urbandale PD hosts, Urbandale Police Department, so when it comes to meetings, it's actually a police department administered program. Different cities use different departments for it, so I've really kind of modeled ours after theirs. They have a highly successful program, uh, utilized, uh, the majority of ordinances that they had constructed and then submitted them to Amy. Go through and, and make sure they're correct for Oak City. And this will just give us the ordinance backing, the ability to go ahead and administer this antlers deer hunting program underneath the state county guidelines and now our city guidelines.
Questions, comments, motion?
So.
Second. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak? Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Have an option here to waive second and third readings.
Let me just ask for that so we can get another prior to the season start.
Take a motion.
So.
Second. Roll call.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Next item, first reading ordinance two thousand nineteen thirteen hundred, deleting section fifty-five point two zero provision on feeding of whitetail deer and adding new chapter forty-one A special bow hunt, bow hunting of antler as deer. Need a motion?
So. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet? Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, I need a motion to waive or an option here to waive second, third reading. Take a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel? Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen eight hundred approving rezoning of Bergen Farms, A one to R.
So.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet? Devorak?
Motion carries. Next item, second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen nine hundred approving rezoning of Miller property, A one to R two. Motion, please?
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Just real quick on that one, did we get your comments to the developer and it was after they left last time, so there's one, this request on access to the hog, we got that? Did we make that connection? Do we know on?
Um, no, not in regards to the rezoning. That will be a, an item discussed.
Yeah, I, I, I realize that sooner rather than later, make it known, the desire, again, I'm not promising anything, don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure the connection.
Next item, defer final reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen seven hundred rezoning three oh one Walnut Street, R two to C one until October fourteenth, two thousand nine, as requested by the property owner. The memo in packet, Don, you have anything to add?
Um, no, uh, just the memo outlined, the property owner approached us and said he has a potential buyer, does not want the property stoned and like to table until he sees the test sell or not. Uh, so the proposal is tabled, the third reading on that until, yeah, October fourteenth, council meeting.
So assuming that happens, we just, what do we do?
If you, it is the win, which is rooted here, you see, to defer the final reading, so it'll automatically be put on, if you pass this resolution or this motion, it will be automatically put on the October fourteenth agenda unless the property owner tells us to pull it.
Okay, but so if the sale goes through and we want to, want it to remain R two instead of C one, but two readings into moving it to C one, we just don't?
You just don't.
Go through the third and.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Motion carries. Next item, Snyder and Assisius invoices for two thousand, June two thousand nineteen, amount of thirty-two thousand thirty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Need a motion, please?
So.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Upstate?
Sarchet?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Reports in particulars, I'll start up here, Rob.
Um, a couple things. One, I guess first from, uh, Don's memo earlier, Luke, could we get a, get an intersection cost update both from Snyder and from Bridge Entry, Hall Park, I don't know if that. Disseminated in whatever way, but just an update on where we're at. We talked about that a while back and I don't remember the scene from my side, so.
So from the standpoint of the, what's going on in mediation?
Yeah.
You mean?
Yeah.
Yes, I can get you an update that. It, it's ready to, the mediation is set, it has not happened yet. Want to say it's set for sometime in September.
September eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah, so right now things are just on hold pending that mediation, but we have all parties to the table in that mediation, so.
Yeah, that seemed like a natural point. Can I just get a, again, just as a informational?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where we're at from both sides.
We'll bring you up to date as soon as that has happened, absolutely.
Um, and then one of, I'd asked maybe a month or so ago, because I think we're around a year into forecast five, I think you were gone, Lizzie, but sometime coming up, I think there's a lot going on now, but just get a overview on how that's gone, what we got from it and sort of, whatever for me, guys. I mean, Jen, I know, great, if something, an email, whatever, just kind of what we spent, what we got from it, how it's working, uh, just an update there. Um, and then my last thing, so. Um, I talked to you January before the first meeting this month, apparently didn't happen. I still would like to continue with that, um, joint session, whatever you want to call it, um, sometime soon. Um, and the primary reason for that, I know we are coming into the, the strategic planning, this I don't think is, is in any way a follower of that, but to talk about that. Um, but as, as we do, just to, to, you know, parks are seasonal, park sport is relatively seasonal, uh, some of the things that they talked about, um, if we want to empower them to do, I think they could work on over the winter, so we're ready to go in the spring and getting that sort of joint session. Um, September, October, where, whenever it is, uh, Jenny had suggested maybe a five o'clock before their meeting at six, uh, but I just want to bring that up because I don't want it to be my approach, I don't want it to be my viewpoint on this, uh, so either I. Want everybody's, uh, else's input there, so it's just possible that can get planning on that or discuss the approach, either of this.
Anything else? Anything? Anything down here to add?
Uh, I was just going to ask, uh, how the transition, because we brought Ariana to take over the, you know, managed services for the IT and just check up on that, I was just out of breath, I didn't tell you, but are things going well?
I think it's going really smoothly. We haven't had any hiccups from their, um, on their side. We, every time we reach out to them with a new ticket, they seem to be pretty responsive. Trace felt a little bit of the effect when we transitioned, his server went down and he lost a lot of his data, um, but I mean.
They were able to recover a vast majority of the loss. It wasn't anything they did wrong, it was about naming names of previous IT professionals here in the city that had certain things within the server setup, set up wrong. So when Ariana remoted in to start kind of inventorying what was in there, it, I'm not literate enough, I can't even know what happened, but it triggered basically a crash and we lost a lot of data, but Ariana did work diligently to recover most of what was lost and nothing that stopped our operations by any means. It was inconvenient, but to reiterate that, I don't, my limited knowledge was that the Ariana did that caused that. There's kind of growing pains, I think, of moving out of, kind of dark ages.
Not knowing what's, what their current infrastructure is based on.
Yeah.
That's right.
I, I built that over there with, we had zero money on the line, I, we were scraping funds together to try to get something operational three years ago, when I started as chief, so it's good to, you know, move into the future and get more robust systems put in place.
Good. Well, and I just mentioned that because, uh, and you teach that perfectly, but the risk is the most important. You have brought in another service that takes the risk off the city's plate, right? And be it prime, uh, health information or just data that you need to have, and I'm glad that it's going well because it was, it's hard to always replace a FTE with a, you know, granted, we didn't have one at that time, we didn't have time, IT director brought Ariana in, but it really, you do more with less, you know, because that's what they do every day. So it's really, uh, I guess anytime we can outsource without taking jobs, we don't want to do that, but to make other people's jobs easier, I think that's a, something we really need to look at. And it could be something where our current providers can do more for us and provide more services that we, we're not sure about, it's just a matter of time and understanding, but thanks for that.
Um, I guess I'm, the next, I went to a national night out last week, uh, it was always a great event and my kids have blast and all kinds of trinkets and eat sugar cookies and come with a tattoo, so thank you to you guys and your staff for putting that on. I said my kids love it, but then, you know, just little things too, you notice. I know you've made it, well, you're really, really your goal of the department to be engaged in the community and become that, you know, forces out there, not in an intimidating manner, but a friendly manner. And my kid's got a safety citation this summer and as we were waiting in line for one of the games, my daughter says, Mom, that guy's the one that gave us our treats, you know, so I mean, again, all the way down to six and eight-year-olds recognizes police officers that are out there, you know, giving out treats for wearing their bike helmets and.
Yep.
Great event, mom. Thank you guys for that and, and all both of your staff.
And my, and probably works off with it as well.
Yes, yes. Well, and, and thank you.
That wasn't my comment.
Public works, I know, you know. Public works, I know, you know, there were a lot of volunteers also that helped make that as well. Again, another just community event, everybody pitches in and...
You got it from you? Tom? Awesome. I got just a couple of quick things. Next, next council meeting is the twenty-sixth, four thirty PM work session, please mark your calendars accordingly. A quick reminder, because of the meeting that we had today, school's back session coming on this next Friday, so be watching for those school buses that are out and about and don't run the stop signs, right Trace? Be a little, be a little pricey for somebody. So anyway, along the lines of the school, something that's exciting that they've proposed to us, a meeting we had today with Dan Mark as well as one of the students and one of the advisors. Northport wants to do a homecoming parade this year and they wanna do it in Oak City, so we're working with them, trying to help them, help guide them through this right now, they're looking at twentieth of September. Sounds like there's gonna be from like two to three thirty, so they're, they've got some big plans and I hope that it can work. To my knowledge, they've never had a homecoming parade, so this is something that the students are trying to take on and they wanna do it here in Oak City, which I think is great. And so we'll be working with staff with Public Works today on that, and so they'll be bringing forth site plan and hopefully they'll be a student here next, the next council meeting.
Makes sense. I can sense your excitement, Mike, you just can't contain yourself.
No, Randy was there, Randy was excited, now, now Mike on the train. So anyway, no, that's, no, that's good. And that's like nine days after RV TV, so that's why Mike's really excited, obviously. But anyways, so no, it's very exciting that they are interested in doing that. Bridget's gonna help them through, help guide them through the site plan and the various things that need to happen. But anyway, so there'll be more coming on that, but just kind of exciting, so. And then I talked to Supervisor Brownell today and I think he's gonna be coming to our September tenth meeting if everything works, it just, anybody wants to hear what's going on with Oak County, he'll be here on September. Anyway, staff have anything?
I'd just like to, again, publicly thank everybody that participated in National Night Out. The fire department was a big help with it, let us use our facilities, Public Works helped out. Again, I recognize Lieutenant Sipker, he spearheads National Night Out every year, does a great job with it and we had, we estimated a little over five hundred people this year, by far our largest event, so we're looking at making it bigger and better for next year. And anyway, just thanking, just thank you to all the citizens and kids, everybody came out, it was a lot of fun. And the other thing I wanna do is I'd want to publicly thank Snyder Graphics in Des Moines, they donated, they realized our Kubota, we had restripped all of our cars so they all matched and looked professional. And we didn't even use them for any of our cars except for one, which is another company that's now out of business. We started using Snyder and they did a great service and they did that all pro bono, like they designed the graphics and took all the old, kinda the old nineteen nineties graphics off of it and did that, so. That was very, very nice of them. We were hiring them to do it and when they got done, he goes, no, I'd just like to donate that, please, sir.
Awesome.
Just to give you guys a heads up, on August twenty-sixth, our auditors will be here in the office, so since we're having the work session at four, you might see them walking back and forth a little bit. They should be in the office probably until Wednesday afternoon.
All right, chief, anything else to add from you?
I was just gonna echo, school's about to begin and if you follow us on Facebook, we posted, if you see the bus lights flashing, you better stop, kinda thing. I always say back to school is buses and bicycles, so be cautious.
You're excited for football season, aren't you?
I'm ready for football.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, they got a new football coach and his, both of his boys from Orenale used to, used to play for him.
Played for Grange, he's a good coach.
Yeah.
Big hopes for my book.
You get that plug in. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Deer Haven and Grange Street intersection starts this week. We, letters went out to property owners along Deer Haven, yeah, East Grange Street, they burden, and we also let the school know about closure, your section with Mike Pearson. Transportation, transportation, so he's got that.
Great. Bridget, anything? Excellent. I need a motion, please?
So move.
All in favor?
Ooh, dang, I got a ding out of there.
So I talked to Brownell and he, he's going to like Maui or something crazy, so I'm like, can you, can you come in two weeks?
Well, I'm gonna be on vacation.